Do you feel... What do they think?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody get a chance to read the minutes. Review. Go over them, I didn't see anything.
I didn't.
Did you guys see anything?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Bill makes a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Be in a seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Uh...
It's two minutes here. Yeah, it's two minutes here. You want to do both?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to approve both.
Yeah.
But a special session in a regular meeting.
I'll take the vote.
Bill makes motion to approve both, be in a seconds, both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Special purpose jail tax rate. We discussed how to reduce station if reducing it from point six oh to point, point six five to point six oh. We can make a motion to go through the process today. We still have to advertise it. Has to be advertised, we still have to have a public hearing on it. And they said they take care of all that for us, but if you want to start the process, we'd make a motion to start the process. If there's any more discussions.
I'll make that motion.
Start the process.
I'll second.
Be in seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Set a public hearing up for like nine oh five on the next meeting. Okay? All right? Have it out of the way. That way we can do the pledge and the minutes, start the public hearing. Okay. Additionals. We can only have one. And that is click and deliver. Green Berth Serrato, eighty-five hundred fifty-three dollars, Brent share. Everybody get an email on that one? Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve.
Ashley makes a motion to approve. Bill only seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Transfers. I think everybody got a copy and got an explanation from Judge Day on what he was wanting to do. Juvenile probation officer, two thousand dollars in training and contractual services of thirty-two thousand nine twenty-one. This was left over in his budget from seventy thousand we put in for him to have two probation officers, two juvenile probation officers.
Now, he's only got one, if we put in for two, and this is part of this.
Right. So, this is so he can use it for other, other purposes. I think he's going to try to live with one juvenile probation officer. Anybody have any discussion? Questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Kenny makes motion to approve.
Second.
Ashley seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Food and beverage tax. We're going to approach it.
Well, our option is to postpone indefinitely, right?
Correct. That would be the correct wording I would use.
Yeah. We, yeah, save that and we vote it down. Or if we table it, then we've got to bring it back up again.
Hey, that's according to the rules, I don't know.
Well, like I said at the last meeting, I think at some point in time it may have a purpose, but until that time comes, I think we should just postpone it indefinitely. Just hang on to it.
Putting that in the motion?
Putting that in the motion.
Motion to postpone food and beverage tax indefinitely.
I'll second that.
Ashley seconds. Discussion.
One of the things about that is I say we postpone indefinitely, but as this board obviously contains, the council contains through elections and stuff, we have different people. I get more concerned about where that might be down the road, so. I would really like to see us possibly use it for the fairgrounds, but I would like to see us get, you know, the study done and those, the plan put together, what we want to do out there. And then pursue it from there, but I don't know that term indefinitely, I'm not sure I'm happy with that. I think we need, at some point in time, we need to address it if we want to use it or not, but. That is one concern I have, but I think we, we have the, we have it, we have the ability to use it if we need it. I think we would probably be a little bit ahead of ourselves if we just dumped it right now because it could, it could be used for good stuff at fairgrounds. So, long-term benefit for the county.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody in the seat, Ken? Thank you.
Uh, Deanna?
Yeah.
Ernie?
This is to postpone indefinitely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Melanie?
No.
So it's, it's uh, five.
I'll go on, postpone indefinitely. Okay. Let's move on. Investments. I know Kenny and I had Bill talk about the investments we've got. Excuse me. All the investments we've got interest is going into county general. And we need to have an ordinance written so that we can split the investments up back in, into the investment they're coming out of. If that's okay with everybody. Janet made up a list of what she thought should be split up. Outreach fund, which would be county general, edit, L I T, special purpose jail, L I T. Cum cap, cumulative capital development, local roads and streets, and highway restriction, M V H. Uh, treasures are working on figuring a percentage. So once the interest comes in and they'll take a percentage and split it off and fund that belongs in. Everybody understand that?
So these investments, are they, are they invested together?
Right, yeah, they're invested together.
So they're not separate investments either, okay.
No, because I, I talked to Ruben about that too, he said, the more you put one lump sum, the more you're going to get.
Right.
He said, but you can't percentage it out and split it off after the...
So you're basically percentage on how much of that fund was initially put in there?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
I have to have an ordinance written, I'll just need a vote on, have an ordinance written by Chris to split these out.
And then the ARBA funds that we have invested are just totally set off the...
Oh, right. Right, yeah, they're split off.
As is the C D for the special purpose jail, and there's ones set aside, but if you, you get your monthly reports for the balance by funds, there's like three million in the M V H restricted, and there's like three million in all local roads and streets. In my opinion, that industry will go back to them, not to county general. Again, that's, it's, it's legal, because I was saying it's nothing wrong, but.
It doesn't seem wrong.
It would help those funds out.
Seems wrong.
Yeah.
Well, I also would add it because I get questions from Baker Tilling, well, where's the interest for the edit? It's not going in there.
Will that work, Diana? That'll work with an ordinance written, and you can split it again.
Because the current investment policy doesn't allow us to do that, so that's why the ordinance should be imposed.
Okay, move forward. That's all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. I need a motion and a vote on it.
I'll make that motion.
Bill makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Turning seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, have Janet help me and we'll get home, Chris. We'll have an ordinance written. We'll have to approve it probably for the next meeting. Okay. Don Shilling, you want to tell us about the tip? Sir? Either way you want to do it, Don. Or in confusion, be.
Okay. All right. Uh, you have before you a copy of our annual report that's prepared for the state gateway, that's the state gateway report, showing what the county redevelopment commission has spent over the past year and our income and our expenditures. Predominantly, almost all of our expenditures went to the county highway garage project. Uh, we did also fund one project for the sheriff's department. And, uh, and then one small, one real small project for the county E I A. So, but that's predominantly what we did this year. Other than that, does anybody have any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Don?
Just a summary, Don, with, with, how much is left in that fund and how much do you expect to come in over the next several years, Jim?
Okay. Uh, we have about two point seven million left in the fund right now. And, uh, income right now is projected as about two million a year, according to Baker Tilling, based on what they see, what property taxes going ahead.
What projects do you have going in the future, you think?
We have a couple of projects that's been talked about for the last couple of years that may or may not happen. Uh, other than that, we don't have any other significant projects on the schedule right at the moment. So, um, yeah.
Can you kind of see how it goes? Can you explain, Don, to everybody how the tip works?
Okay.
It's property tax.
Okay. The, 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 the property taxes from the increased by wayion by Honda, not, not the base.
Base, yeah.
The base still goes where it's always gone, but the increase went from Honda. Property tax from that goes to, number one, pay the bonds that were issued and to fund a lot of the infrastructure investments required by Honda Canyon. What's left over on the county tax side, well, city tax side too, but county tax side goes to the county redevelopment commission. Like I said, about two million a year right now. Uh, we have a list of, we, over the years, back in two thousand and six, we developed a list of projects that, that money could be spent on. Uh, we've added, uh, we've had two amendments to that and, uh, and things that have come up, but we have a project list. We can spend money for that project list. And, uh, most of that is infrastructure investments. We've done quite a bit of infrastructure over the years, water, sewer, roads, county highway department.
But it has to affect Honda tip district?
We, that has to provide a benefit to the Honda tip district.
Not just Honda, but the tip district?
The tip district.
There is an area of it.
Well, actually, it's the redevelopment.
Yeah.
It's called the economic development district. That is bigger than, it was originally just Honda's property, it's bigger than that now. Over the years, we've expanded that redevelopment area and it includes, uh, area of Round Adams, not Adams, but Round Adams, also includes area out west, forty-six west, three forty-six west, and also some area, uh, north of the interstate between four twenty-one.
And you, as a tip, you normally do not fund the whole project. I, I hear a lot of things that the county highway was not under, uh, in budget, it was over budget, but you do not tip, normally fund the whole project.
What we do is, we look at, yeah, we always ask where else underfunding it, we fund the what? You can't come up with that. Uh, but again, it all has to benefit that economic development area in some shape or form.
And schools. We have done a lot for schools.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, the county, the state passed the law that said we could spend up to fifteen percent for county schools, and we have done both, we helped the county schools and the city schools, both.
When's the bond run down?
Bond is done in two thousand and thirty-two, I believe.
So when is tip, they done then?
Yeah, it's a thirty-year tip district, yes, or, or, yeah.
And Honda owns the bond.
Yeah. Yeah, Honda bought, actually bought the bonds that we issued in order to fund a lot of those main infrastructure improvements that originally were water and sewer nodes and some roads. Honda bought those bonds, we issued bonds and Honda actually bought the bonds.
So that money, so it can be used for really any project we decide, as long as it benefits the district?
Like I said, we have a list and it has to be on that list.
Okay.
Uh, for this, and what you're able to do. Yeah, what we're able to, to, to spend that money on.
Is that, does the state regulate that too, on the, uh?
Uh, they, the state has not approved the list, we can't have that approval, but the, the county, the county commissioners, they have to approve any changes, the original and any changes has to go through the commission.
Any other questions? I will say this much, it has benefited the county quite a bit, and the schools. We spent a lot of money, I mean, since I've been on there, the schools have really benefited. With the STEM program and the C and A program in the south, and, did we pay preschool this year?
No, we did last year.
Last year, last year.
For a bit.
Preschool at Greenberg. Yeah.
Yeah.
Don does a good job.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. That's all on my list. Eric's getting the report? Yeah.
You may have seen already, I provided you a copy of our annual jail inspection report, and our annual report, so if you're reading, join us.
Thank you. How's everything going with our maintenance guy? That, I don't, I haven't heard any reports, must be hired even.
Yeah, glad he's not there, he's, excuse me, he's taking care of all the projects, the top loss management projects.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're happy to have him.
Anybody else got anything for us? God.
Uh, December, I went after the rural call for local roads and road project or bridge project. And I just got an award letter, I put in for a bridge under the North Call, Bridge one forty-one, on South County Road, one thousand west, and six hundred south, out to South of Cali, across the county line. I got an award letter, we did get awarded that project, it's a federally project, eighty-four. So I'm just now starting to process through the R F Ps and the whole preliminary thing goes along with federal highway and indoc. So.
On coming out, King Bridge?
Uh, yes.
Come out King Bridge.
Be done this year or?
Two months.
When's it?
It, it probably will not last, I haven't done the schedule yet, it's probably not going to be till twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. And it's, like I said, it's about four or five year process, so.
Yeah, that bridge has been closed for...
Yeah. Bridge one forty-one, it's got a low, no, it's just got a low grade.
Okay, how about the one there on?
On fifty?
Yeah.
That is Bridge seventy. Uh, that was brought up at the commissioners meeting, whether we were going to, because when I, before I took over from Mark, his, his thinking was that we fix that old arch bridge on, uh, I mean, north, Bridge seventy-three, which was on one fifty. Okay, so we took that out, realigned the road, paved that road as the runaround. Okay? Um, and that we would just close that bridge permanently and, uh, but anyhow, it had been some discussion, I don't know that, I know the postmaster called one of the commissioners and asked them about it because of the routing. Uh, I had one of the landowners that lives at the very back, by that bridge, come in and asked me what they were going to do with that, so I kind of left it up to the commissioners what they want to do. I, we would not go after that on a federally project, we would build that in-house. Uh, but it's going to be, it's going to require a lot of accuracy, so knowing right away, because it would have to be realigned. Um, probably estimated cost on that if we did it in-house, probably about three hundred fifty thousand. Uh, that would not be, if what we've got set up now, we wouldn't be able to do it in the next two or three years. So, and I followed all the rules and got postings and everything put up there to satisfy federal highway and indoc. So, as of right now, it's just sitting there, uh, as being closed. We're, we're going to close it permanently and take it off the inventory, that needs to be a, uh, a decision by the commissioners.
Are you on bridges, with that one up on fifty north, east of eight fifty there?
That's what I was talking about. That, well, on fifty north.
Oh, on fifty north, okay. I was thinking of the one out here.
Bernie.
Coming out rugby. That bridge has been closed for...
Where's that?
Come out of rugby and come this way, the road's closed right there because of the bridge. Western part of the county.
Whether it's Bridge one thirty-one...
Go to Lake Loretta and head west.
Go where?
Through to Bernie, or not Bernie, the road south of Bernie.
Okay, that's Bridge one thirty-one.
Okay.
Okay, and that is... And that is on a bridge replacement, okay, or.
So it is getting.
Yes, that is actually Bridge 131, that's the one that Mark had started, and then that actually just got noticed to proceed last, last year to start with P and right away, and everything goes along with that. So that is in the schedule, I think that is due to, I think, 2029, when they'll start construction. Yeah, that was one that Mark went after for federal aid and got. So it's in the process, but it won't be for.
8020?
Yes.
So the one on 50 North, they have decided they're going to repeal it or?
No, the commissioners haven't decided, but, I mean, they asked me if we, yes, to be, if I had any kind of an idea of cost, so I went back, got it in, we kind of put our heads together, the cost on that's going to be about 350,000 approximately, if we did it in-house. So that may be something that, you know, statutory wise, without a raise in the, to the bridge last year, that may help that along, where we could possibly use that, if they want to do that.
Anybody else got anything for us?
Just a quick explanation of the special purpose jail tax, that, that lowering of it, what does that save the county, and then what can we use that special jail tax for? What is the, what's available to use that for?
It's really got some guidelines to it, it'll end up saving roughly, hopefully around 350,000, a little bit more.
Okay.
Is what it'll say.
Okay.
But it is used to pay for the jail.
Okay.
And it is used for operations and maintenance, is what it can be used for, that's all.
Okay.
It's got, it's got earmarks on it that it can't go nowhere else.
All right.
I always come through the legislature.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Most of you, you know that we did a job description, FLSA analysis, gathered information from everybody, offices, departments, so that's been a long process, but it is now complete. I got the draft back on Friday, so still a draft, few things to finalize, but the next steps would be, remind her, when she awaits stats, they like to meet with, they said normally, like, three counties on a commissioner, kind of set up a team to review that. And I've asked that she do that in person, because most of what we've done so far is the conversations have been under the phone, but I think, I want to make sure that people understand everything that's being presented, so. She is off till the 31st, so March is out, but we could, she's supposed to be looking at some April dates and then maybe by that, if you've got a team together, who you want.
Well, we already have a payroll committee that hasn't met for quite a while, if we just want to throw out a payroll committee or?
What they call those things, look at it?
Oh, yeah.
Said, you know, she was talking about.
It'd be part of our budget, for sure.
Yeah. I think we need to.
You, you have a payroll committee?
Yeah, that's how, that's how we started that process.
Okay. Okay. So get me those names, I guess, and.
Well, I think what Danny said is maybe we can do two different sessions?
Yeah, do a couple, because I think everybody needs to do something on it. I mean, in fact, we can do that.
And some dates, and then we'll put that together.
Make sure it's after April 8. I don't want to share how fast court's in and out. Yeah, get us some dates, whatever dates they come up with, and we'll try to work around it. Payroll committee wants to meet on it first, but I think all those need to sit in on it, on it, somewhere along the line and see what's going on.
Speaking of April 8, Dr. Powell, did you want to talk about the eclipse processes?
Yeah.
Did you want to talk about?
Yes, I did.
I'm done.
The health department has licenses for the eclipse available, give them away. Council workers all got this set, and there's a pile up here with Janet, pick up some if you want them, and if we run out, there's more, the health department, just go get them.
They want to give them away before April 8?
More and more before April 8.
2044 is the next time we'll be getting them.
Just one thing, which people, the property tax statements, some people have already received theirs in the mail, and they should be coming out, if you haven't received them, this week. Look out.
Thank you. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn, go move.
Aye.
Any more motion? Three seconds. What are you going to do now?